All right, if everyone would please take notice, yes, okay, if you'll stand. If you'll take notice of the exits, we have one here to your left, one in the rear, and then another behind us. And if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you for attending the Town of Beatty Planning Board meeting.
Did you make it?
I guess not.
Has the board had a chance to review March and April 2024's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve them?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is Kemco Development Corp. All right, this unfortunately has been open or adjourned, the public hearing, for now 23 months, I believe is the correct number. It's not the applicant's fault, and I'll leave it there. I have a, I have a letter from the engineer, from Mike Lettsby and Associates, says, Dear Chairman and Board Members, the above referenced project is scheduled before the planning board tonight for an adjourned public hearing. The above referenced project is, on behalf of our client, we respectfully request the item to be adjourned to the June 20th, 2024 meeting. A comprehensive submittal package was delivered to the planning office this morning. The adjournment will allow time for the town engineer to review the, the package for the June meeting. This package specifically addresses the water course issue discussed at the last meeting. We apologize to anyone from the public that may be here to comment specifically on this project. If you have any additional questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to call. So unfortunately, we can't review this this evening. We've received, the town engineers, answers to the town engineer's comment letter this morning, which didn't allow our town engineer or any of us to review the submittal for this evening. This has caused a lot of inconvenience to some individuals in our town who want to comment on this project, and this is the limited explanation that we have for it today. So.
Senator Hallisett.
Of course, sure. So a motion to open the, or, yeah.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please, Mr. Crane.
Hey, good, good, good. I like your haircut.
254 Gardner Hollow Road. And, uh, let's get it properly. And, uh, the video of the stream, the stream comes down that they want to move.
Well, if there's going to be a video, all right, there has to be a medium in which the entire board can see it so that it can become a record of these proceedings.
Yeah. So is there, what is this, Mr. Crane? Is this a?
This is a flip video.
A little flip video?
Yeah, I sent a email probably too late to.
I have it, yeah.
All right. So why don't you describe the video at the podium, and then that video we will bring to the June meeting for everybody to.
Actually, um, our engineer has it.
Oh, okay.
If he can somehow.
I'm gonna send it to Alitha and.
Project it. It can be the basis for the applicant's response at the next meeting.
My technology is a little limited, Senator.
No, no.
I've actually never seen that before. Maybe, maybe we have to come back around to that at some point.
It's a compact, isn't it?
Yeah. All right.
They do.
So if you'd like to narrate a little bit or just, whatever.
Not as quickly. At the last meeting, the applicant said something like, well, it's pretty close to this point, but we'll just move.
Do you have a USB on that?
So yes, there was a comment that it could just be re.
Just move, it's only, it's a ditch anyway. Um, it's more than a ditch. It's coming down pretty good right now. I showed a couple people the small video and the, it goes, it goes down parallel to the road for 10 yards, five yards, 10 yards, somewhere in there, and then it goes under a tube. What do you call it?
Culvert.
You call it a culvert pipe. And then it goes, and then it goes into a much bigger stream right, right away, as soon as it gets under the road. And the bigger stream, I don't remember the name of it, but it's a tributary to Gardner Hollow stream, which is Class A stream. Uh, that's my understanding. You know, the board would have to, of course, look into the details of it, but that's my understanding is that it's, it's more than a ditch. It's, my understanding, I mean, my guess would be it would come under D E C.
Right.
Regulation, I guess, but.
So that been, what type of stream has that been, oh, that's.
That's only, he's got it up there.
Is Dan, do you know what kind of stream it is?
There's several of those along the road there.
Yeah, that, that's the video. So, you know, and it showed up on our N R I maps, and Cliff had mentioned it last meeting as well. So it shows up as a, as a water course on our N R I maps.
Okay.
Is that on property itself?
Yeah, it comes down right towards Pleasant Ridge Road, hits into the ditch. There's a culvert pipe that crosses Pleasant Ridge down into the stream on the opposite side.
One of the, one of the points that Rob brought up last meeting was that we were having issues getting that area surveyed and marked, right? I think Pete had.
I'm sorry if I'm saying it like this.
Pete, you had requested that, that, that that wetlands be marked, right? And you, you went by and you looked to see if it was marked. Now I think they've, they've gone down those rebarb. But Rob LePain brought up last meeting that he didn't see a stamp on the survey. I don't know whether, no, that's just something else that we have to maybe look out for.
Yeah, if we, if we question the applicants professional, we have the right to hire our own professional when we're out there if we need to?
True. Absolutely.
I mean, what disturbs me is the misrepresentation from the beginning of what trees are out there, the water courses are out there, and, you know, so we were told one thing, but, you know, to the evidence is right there, that, you know, there is definitely a stream there, and, and it falls, you know, within our regulations to, you know, we have to assess any impacts to that. So at the last meeting, I made it very clear that they need to go back, re-review what's on their plan, what's the existing conditions, and design accordingly. And, you know, if there's an actual stream there, you know, you have to design around it, you know? And however, whatever that means, if however they can design that doesn't have an impact to the stream, that's what we as a board have to assess.
John, can you have me replay it one more time?
Sure.
For so far.
I mean, this appears to have the anatomy of every part of an ecosystem of a stream. It doesn't even seem to be seasonal to me. It has the boulders, it has the flowing water, the wetland area, tiny bits of vegetation and wetland here and there, you know? There's clearly biological activity occurring all up and down the stream. It's something we, that according to our ordinance, we're supposed to be looking out for.
But is it seasonal, Rob?
I mean, that does not look like a seasonal stream to me. That looks like a perennial stream. It's got enough rushing water that it's clearly has all these boulders and sediment and, you know? I guess on, in a droughty year, there's a lot of streams that can be construed as, as seasonal, but I would be interested to see in the middle of the summer what that looks like. But either way, it doesn't really, for our purposes, it's classified as a water course, period, and we have to review it as such.
And Cliff, all water courses have the same buffer?
Yes.
Well, if this board feels that it needs the assistance of.
Fifty feet.
An expert in that particular field for your hard look that you're required to give to, you know, under seeker as well, yes, then, you know, you're, you're within your rights to, and you're duty bound actually to seek that assistance and have your own expert and consultant for that reason.
Is that a motion?
If that's something you wish to do.
You know, I think we, on every project, we want to give the applicant the benefit of the doubt and provide their own professional services, and in most cases, it's fine. And so we always have to give them that opportunity to, you know, handle that part of it with their own professional services, gives them the right to negotiate and keeps us out of it. But when it comes into question, when we, when there's been misrepresentations out there, and they're representing that something's not there, and then we're finding out clearly that it is there, and, you know, they were provided with incomplete survey, it maybe doesn't have all the requirements of the survey, yeah, maybe, maybe we should hire our own professional.
I think you should. I mean, you have a member of the public who just provided a video and evidence of a water course. I don't know if it meets the definition of a water course, but there's definitely a stream. Now, whether or not you can draw conclusions from that video without the assistance of an expert who, who can at least, you know, draw parallels to our code and instruct you and advise you, I don't think you can without that expert, to be honest with you. So you might want to.
I'm feeling favorable towards requesting that.
The fact that it's been misrepresented is brown's enough for me.
Right. Thank you, Jason. So can I have a motion then for a scientist? Is it a biologist or?
Be a wetland scientist.
A wetland scientist.
Wetland specialist.
To report on, on the nature of the wetlands on that property and this water course.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, just so it's clear, that package that came in today, again, I didn't have any time to look at it this morning.
Right.
Um, and it was due 17 days ago to be on tonight's meeting. So the standards within 155-52 is what we talked about at the last meeting. I said, I said specifically to the applicant, I said, you have to provide all of the documentation that's outlined in 155-52. It's a lengthy section of our code, all about the, the standards, the application process, what you need to do in order for you to make a permit decision, because it's a water resource permit that this board is charged with, with making a decision on. So I don't know the level of the detail of what was submitted today to know if we can even give that to somebody to have them, them do a review, but I'm, I'm definitely happy if you want to choose to assign somebody. We can, we can offer some suggestions and, and get somebody on board that would be able to support the board and that.
How does, how does that work logistically?
Once we authorize it, you could seek out those services?
Do I have to talk to the town board about that?
No, this board has inherent authority to authorize it.
Okay. And that becomes an escrow expense, right? Not a town expense?
Yeah, it would be through the escrow from the applicant, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Hundred percent.
Just to be clear on that.
Yep.
Okay, so let's.
And just for me to be clear, I think it's warranted, we need an accurate assessment of the wetlands and the water course, because it's currently in question, and that's why we need to get a wetland specialist on board.
Any other? Mr. Crane, thank you very much for this.
Does that look like what you saw?
Yeah. I appreciate, I appreciate you doing this for us. Thank you.
Does it, it looks like what you saw when you looked at the?
I think we have to have the expert answer that.
Yeah, okay.
There's evidence to support that.
I hadn't seen it move like this. As a matter of fact, it was hard for me to locate because of all the thicket and everything, but, yeah.
No, but I think at the last meeting, we, we all suspected that it's there. This just provides the evidence. Okay, is this, you know?
Thank you.
I've certainly no experts.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I could add, though, is we have to somehow make sure that that, that video is placed on a medium and becomes permanently part of this record.
Okay.
All right, so.
Alitha has it now.
All right.
In her email, so.
Good. It's maybe we put it on a, what do you call those things?
USB.
Flash drive, yeah. I can never come up with that.
Thumb drive, flash drive?
Yeah, put it on a flash drive and make it part of the record and upload it to our minutes and the materials the public can see.
Yeah, I think it's important to have an independent assessment, you know? I, hopefully that they come up and they find the same, you know, they look at, it, it comes out similar or close to what the, the weather map that was provided, but at this point, it's in search question, we really need our own independent assessment.
And you rightfully have to now actually obtain that expert opinion in order to satisfy our book.
So I think you had a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Right, Fay was second.
The only question is whether or not that expert will be able to get up to speed by the next meeting, so maybe we should adjourn this to the July meeting for that purpose, because the expert needs to be engaged. He has to see what's going on and then offer, you know, have a meaningful meeting with that expert here.
So can I make the motion to adjourn it to July then? Well, you have a motion on the table right now first that might have to be addressed first.
So all, all in favor for having an expert, a.
Conduct a wetland delineation.
A wetland scientist, yes.
And assessment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
So Jason, would you please repeat your motion?
Yeah, just like to make a motion to adjourn it to July based on what we just discussed.
Oh, one thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we need to, do you need to ask if anyone else wants to speak?
We do, yeah, thank you for reminding me.
Before we.
Good point.
Yes, so is there anyone else in the, in the audience that would like, or from the public about Kemco? No, okay. Motion to close the, or adjourn the public hearing?
I'll second it.
To July?
To July 18th.
18th, yes.
2024.
Jason made that motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
The public hearing would be kept open until that date.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. All right, so the next item on the agenda is Pizzuto Lot Line. Received the letter again from Brian Hildebrandt, the engineer. This adjournment is for the same reason that the others, they're waiting on the D E C. So is there anyone here would like to speak about the Pizzuto Lot Line? Okay, so we can adjourn that to the June meeting? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? The Pizzuto Lot Line, so moved? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's June 20th.
June 20th, okay. And, yeah, was there a second on the adjournment?
Yeah, I did.
You did, Pete did, okay.
The short-haired guy over there.
Yeah. Handsome guy.
I like that ponytail. That looks good, too.
Seconded by that short-haired guy over there.
Mr., Mr. Reicherman. Did I say your name right? No, I did.
That's good. It's close enough.
Before we get started, there, there was some inconsistencies with the mailing, but everything is, is right now. We've received everything regarding the, the distribution and the announcement.
Mr. Chairman, I think our, our planning board secretary just asked her to make a record regarding one of the mailings, and so this board can do that, please.
So one of the return cards didn't come back. That joining property owner was hand-delivered the notification. He brought it in, and he also mentioned that he did not have any comments or issues.
Yeah.
Can you identify the address?
That was, yeah, 642 Route 216. He indicated that he no longer lives at that property address or no longer owns that property, and so the card never made it to him. We have it now.
Great, yeah.
And also for the record, the affidavit from the Poughkeepsie Journal has been received.
Have to give it a publication.
Yep.
Okay, that's great. Yep, thank you. Dan, would you like, would you like to make any comments, or would you like to speak about your project?
I have no comments. I'm just grateful that I was able to meet James this afternoon and, you know, get that resolved, so no, glad that you were able to accept that. And other than that, you know, I'm just here for the public hearing.
Very good, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think for the purpose of the public, if you could just describe your project a little bit, that would be helpful.
Sure. My name's Christian Rickerman. I'm also the owner of Frog Hollow Development. I own a parcel on Greenhaven Road that, I don't know if it's on that. No, it's, it's a single lot, and it needs, it needs to, I'm adding land to the parcel that I, the primary residence that I have here. And so I own both properties, and I'm just basically moving my rear lot line over my side flylot line over to incorporate a building structure on that property.
What's the village?
It's a barn. It's a garage, a detached garage.
You can't talk.
What do we have?
You'll have to wait, you'll have to wait till we open up the public hearing.
What we're gonna do is, so we're, two things are gonna happen right now. One is we're gonna put the design up on the screen here, and then individuals from public can approach the podium, just announce your name and your address, and you can comment. That way it'll be on the record. Thank you, and it's appreciated. All right, so we need a motion to open the public hearing? Yes.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Good, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Reicherman, is there anything more you'd like to add?
Uh, at this time, I can just, a little lot line realignment of our 25. I'm in the process of, you know, addressing the concerns, you know, and I think most of the comments were addressed by my consultant, and I've already filed with the building department a demo document for the accessory apartment that is on the property.
Okay.
So that's going to be eliminated. Um, that's basically, basically it.
So at this time, I'd like to invite anybody from the public to approach the.
Brian Wilson, I live on Dixon Court, so, which is over here on the lot. I just didn't know the details of what was happening here, so.
Nothing happening to this property?
It's just this property over here.
At this time, yeah.
Okay.
Just, just opening up that flylot there line, because that structure right there is, as you can see on the old property line, this was a structure that was in the front of the property down here that was, was demolished and, I just rebuilt it. Okay, that was my comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Crane? Thank you.
Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. If I recall, at the last meeting, the applicant said that the overall plan is to develop this, to sell it and for development. Is that, is that, am I memory correct?
I'm, I'm not sure what his intentions are, Mr. Crane.
He's right here.
Yeah. I could have him, I could have him answer that question if you'd like.
Okay, and then if it is to be developed, I'd like to know, as a member of the public, what's on there, how many trees are on there? I can't tell anything from that diagram. How many, what kind of land it is?
Yeah, this is just the line lot, that's it.
Yeah, but the plant, I mean, I have to wait till.
So what Jason, what Jason was saying, Mr. Crane, is that this is a lot line realignment, right now, that's the nature of the application.
Okay.
And the board is only discussing that at this point. If there's another application, you know, with.
Before the public hearing.
There'll be, well, and before the public hearing will be a lot of other information that, that will, that will provide details about it.
I'll go with that. It's just that he mentioned it last.
Oh, that's fair, yeah. If I can add one thing to that point, though, as part of this application, there, it's a simple lot line revision that cannot produce or spawn off a new buildable lot. So there's no buildable lots that are gonna be created here, and that is what the, the map says. And there's a note on there, I believe, and if there isn't a note, there's gonna be a note on the map that's, that's on the Mylar that's filed, as well as the deeds, that there's no new buildable lots created.
So if you could just go into that a little more as to why? And that is for perpetuity, or is that just for this conversation?
That's part of this, this application, that it would be a subdivision, a traditional subdivision if buildable lots were created. So that's, that's not the case here, and that's not how the application is set up, and that's not how the notes are set.
Yeah, and maybe some of the wording that would help would be an approved building lot, you know? It's not saying that the lot is not buildable, it's saying that they'd have to go through a process to make buildable lots out of the remainder parcel.
Understood.
Okay?
The, there's gonna be a clause in the deed, and I'm gonna put this in the legal conditions, that the, the conveyance doesn't create any new or additional building lots or parcels. So towards that end, I ask, I'd ask you to instruct the applicant to provide a meets and bounds description of the 1.5 acre parcel that's in blue, I believe light blue, so that the deeds can be easily identified and show that piece going from Frog Hollow to you personally, and it's, it's easier to follow and delineate as to how that was. And it's easier to follow and delineate as to how that was created in the first place, which is the lot line revision. The other point I think that the board is going to hear and see is Frog Hollow, are you the sole shareholder of that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, as we get later on in the conditions of the legal requirements, we're gonna ask for a resolution from that corporation for deeding the property. And are there mortgages that encumber any, either of those properties?
There is a mortgage on my primary property.
So...
Which has been disclosed. I mean, I listed, you know, the facility, the financial facility of that.
When you add a piece of property to, a property that's already encumbered, the bank requires that you notify them of that, but you might want to, you know, talk to your attorney.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this application?
No.
Okay. Anything else from any board members? Dan, anything more for you?
No, not necessarily. I think they did a pretty good job addressing most of the technical comments that we had. One of the things we have to do procedurally would be grant sketch subdivision approval as well, because there were a few items that weren't provided in the first and middle that have been provided since. So, I mentioned that in my letter, and then we can talk about process after that, I suppose.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to grant sketch, now...
Sketch subdivision approval.
Yes, sketch subdivision approval.
I'll make a motion to grant sketch subdivision approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just, you know what, if I can just clarify a point from what we were just talking about before. In the town of Beekman, our code considers lot line realignment a subdivision.
Okay.
And so, again, what, to Craig's point, there's two lots there today.
Yes.
There's two lots there after this process is over. There's no net new lots.
Yeah, to that point, the area depicted in light blue, the 1.5 acres that's gonna be added to Mr. Reichterman's light green parcel, that's gonna be a single unified lot. And that's why the meets and bounds description is important here on the light blue version, because it's gonna be subtracted from Frog Hollow and added to Mr. Reichterman's property.
And that addition of property actually puts that lot into conformity in terms of some side yard setbacks that are in violation right now.
Understood.
So, it's actually...
That's the purpose of the whole thing in the first place.
Completely.
This is a type 2 action. And so, seeker is obviously not required.
Yeah, they deemed that at the last meeting as well, so.
Anything else we can do for you, Mr. Reichterman?
Uh, no.
No?
So, what we're looking to do, and I'll have the conditions prepared for next month's meeting.
Very good.
And forward from there, hopefully.
Yes, we can look to the board, and if you wanna resolve to have us draft a resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval, we can do that for the next meeting as well.
Resolution for conditional final approval. May I have a motion?
Also move.
And may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So, we'll prepare a resolution, and we'll get it signed off on for you. All right, sir? Thank you, have a good night.
Say hi to mom.
Okay, the next item is a discussion item, Town Center Growth.
Good evening, Brian Watts from Dasticos Engineering. Not Dastic, not Stacosa Watts. Get another family engagement, so I get to visit you guys again tonight.
Thank you.
This project is before you again, it was...
If you'll just give us one minute, we're gonna make some noise here. I just wanna open this up. And we're gonna get it also on the screen over there.
Oh, I remember this one.
So, now, this is just one building.
So, this, this is gonna be between the soccer field and Sparrow's Nest?
Yes.
Okay, on that side of the street, right? Just to give everybody who's here.
Yes. Brief project history that this had, was, with a previous professional had gotten through subdivision, sketch subdivision approval, sketch site plan approval for development of what amounts to about twice what we're showing here. He originally had, this was originally gonna be subdivided in the middle.
Right.
With mirrored image lots on either side, parking in the front, buildings, septic's in the rear, and a lot of storm drainage along the western side. We've been approached to bring this to the finish line, and from that starting point, the scale and scope of those improvements, it didn't work out with the site soils and everything there. It was just a little too ambitious. So, with the less-than-ideal soils, we've pulled everything back to about half, essentially. So, we got rid of the western, the western building, and we changed the parking arrangement, so now it's in the rear, more in line with TC standards. The septic and all that will shrink as a result. Stormwater is not nearly as much of a concern now that our disturbance was reduced, and the amount of impervious we'd be creating is substantially reduced. Subdivision elements are no longer applicable. We keep it as one lot. The building's still gonna be same building as the original sketch plan approval, it's gonna have 12 units in it still. Excuse me, 12 bedrooms, four three-bedroom units for a total of 12. So, trying to keep as much as you've already seen.
If I may ask, if you could bring the elevation back up there, what materials will you be using to side it?
I'm not sure if he has a specific siding yet, or call out, but if you're going for a...
Aesthetically, you know, some of the lower-end versions of vinyl.
Oh.
I...
They look low-end.
I don't like, yeah. Does the board have any other comments, so that they have some direction earlier on?
Well, I think we maintain aesthetic review on Town Center projects, so we will be looking at the type of material you're using, your roofs, you know, that sort of thing.
No, I think, I think we're open to what the board's input is on that, to...
Well, we like more natural-looking material, you know, a little upscale.
I like the stone accents at the bottom. If the applicant is interested, I'd like to see more.
Right.
Maybe, you know, to break up some of the siding.
If you think about, I don't know, you look at Dollar General, it's a building that is probably one of the nicest ones you'll find, you know, it's dressed up, and there was some stonework incorporated in that, and we had a lot of input. And they were very great about accepting, you know, our recommendations. So, the building turned out to be quite nice.
You're looking for perhaps more higher stone, a little more stone on the whole?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Just to break up the...
Break up the amount of siding. I like the vertical boards that are presented there.
Is there a slab there right now? And some, I'm not familiar enough to be able to address that, if there was a slab there now or previously. I don't think it's developed.
You're talking about where the deli burned down?
That's a different place.
That's a different parcel.
This is over by the soccer field.
This is over by the library, across the street from the library.
Oh, this is...
Yeah.
This is the next one past Sparrow's Nest.
I do like, I do like the tin on top of the dormer roofs.
Yes.
That's nice, yeah.
But I think it's a nice-looking building, it's just gotta...
A little more dressing.
That's it.
It's kind of a big structure, so what you could do for landscaping would be nice. I'd like to see a landscaping plan.
A little higher.
Four families, right?
Four, four units with three bedrooms per.
It's really a lot nicer, originally, there were gonna be two buildings.
Originally, it was gonna be two.
Which this now provides for some nice open space.
Yes.
Which is nice, a lot nicer.
And then, over the entrance, the main entrance, you have more tin along with columns there, is that right?
Right along the sides?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a nice touch, too. Very nice. And maybe two tones rather than a single tone for the siding is a thought I have.
Siding and two-tone colors siding.
You've been paying architecture, you're an architectural course.
Well, no, you taught me. Yeah. Any other, any other suggestions or comments for the applicant? What's the, the amount of disturbance on the site?
It's just under 0.9 acres as we're showing it now. That may fluctuate or change as we go through the Board of Health and the regulatory agencies. But we are very determined to keep it under an acre and try to just keep as much drainage, you know, pre-post should work out, but we're trying to avoid having to do any large-scale water quality treatments, because again, with the soils being relatively inhospitable towards infiltration, similarly, we're having a couple other properties, it's hard to meet some of those water quality volumes. We'll do what we can anyway, right now.
Have you done the well yet?
I don't believe the wells been drilled. We're proposing it in the southeast corner. The... I'm developing any kind of wells or anything. I believe there's a well a little bit farther away, but we are more than 250 feet away. The public water supply, so we're going to the mechanical room there in the corner. That's where we're gonna have any kind of treatment or anything. This will match, so you can expect some more stonework and anything on that to complement the building. The, we're gonna have a lot of sheet flow that's coming straight off into this now open, flat area to try to keep all the water on site as much as we can without having to try to dig ponds.
With the septic and everything, you're still able to utilize the existing, even though it's not perking the way it's supposed to?
It's a larger system. I believe this has already been sized, as we're showing, to work, but if we were to have subdivided it, we wouldn't have, we're not gonna get two of those systems on here and meet all the setback requirements and stormwater.
It's adequate in the ground for that size?
Pardon?
You're not having to build a pump-up system, or you don't have to bring in extra fill or anything like that? You can use what's there.
Okay. It's showing fill right now.
Right.
You know, it's common for Duchess County to have a fill pad, so.
It's fortunate. Are there any tree removals? Tree removals?
There's gonna be, just in the vicinity of disturbance here, we're gonna, we don't have any significant trees between the well and the building. We are gonna obviously lose the trees where we're putting the septic system.
So, we would like the trees to be located on the plans.
They're on there.
Oh, they are?
I think we do have, and they're, all these little markings are trees.
They put the size next to them?
Oh, nice to see. All right, so...
So, on your existing conditions plan, just show those removals, that way the board can understand how many trees that are above the eight-inch that you're showing are being removed.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify and make sure the applicant knows that this is a four-family, it's considered a multifamily under our code, but actually, our code has a special provision in 15536-2 for multifamilies, in which, in the TC district, which this is in, it requires a special use permit and a site plan. So, I don't know if it was specified, I just wanna make sure that this is a site plan slash SED. And this is an unlisted action.
It's 14.9 feet from the right-of-way line, so, what, maybe another 12 to 15 to the edge pavement?
Yeah, 14.9 in the front.
We're 14.9 in the front, we're looking for the, to the pavement? Yeah. I think that's what Pete was asking for, right? Do you want pavement? Peter?
Well, I wondered what the setback was because of the road traffic to the soccer fields.
Yeah, so the...
And I was wondering if maybe under the circumstances, if, if the way it's designed now, if it's set back enough, or if it should be set back, set back a little further, after all, it is essentially a residential property.
Yes, so...
Then they would need a variance.
The setback is zero to 15. So, 15 is supposed to be the max, and this is that same discussion we have every single Town Center project, so.
You have to have a variance.
You know, the county planning department came back during the 239 referral and circulation for lead agency, and they had a number of comments that Brian's team took into consideration in revising the plan. And a lot of it had to do with meeting the town's Town Center design principles and all that. So, they have sidewalks, walkability, buildings up front, parking to the rear of the building, which is all kind of different from the plan that you had seen previously on this project. The original plan, it was kind of reversed.
Yeah. Dan, has Sparrow's Nest installed their sidewalk?
No.
We deferred those?
The way it was set up was that if either property on either side had sidewalks, that they would end up building theirs as well within a certain time.
How close are you to their, are you a butt, a butt in there?
They're bringing the sidewalk right to the common property line.
They are.
Yep.
This application? Yeah. So, this...
Somebody's gotta be the first one, right?
Somebody has to be the first, yeah.
That's what the county said, too.
Yeah. And then, you know, my thinking is, is that, you know, we're not gonna really offer an option to you about that as we had with Sparrow's Nest, and I guess you're agreeable to it because you put it on the plans. And that's nice, because, you know, anybody that's gonna cross the street, children or whomever, will have a sidewalk to get to the library and then safely cross. Wondering whether we need a crosswalk there, maybe or not, but...
There's a stop sign before the entry to the library off of Town Center Boulevard.
Right.
I don't remember if there's crosswalk there, though. I can't remember. I'm saying, I wanna say no.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I hate to do this to Sparrow's Nest now, non-for-profit, tremendous organization, but that's...
That was the agreement.
It was.
That was the agreement, so. I think that they had a certain amount of time.
Right, right.
And there's still some time before they can get this approved and constructed anyway, so.
This is the parcel right next to the Sparrow Nest?
Yes, it's directly adjacent, yeah.
This is terribly exciting. This is possibly our first contiguous sidewalk. No sidewalk to nowhere, maybe.
Well, no sidewalk to Sparrow's Nest. Well, no sidewalk to Sparrow's Nest.
Sparrow's Nest, that I did
I mean, really, they got goosebumps.
Where's Sparrow's Nest?
It is
I think it's on the other side.
The other side?
Yeah, green side.
One way up and down.
Yeah.
So it's directly, of course, more or less from the part of the library.
Yeah, it's close to it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because Sparrow's Nest is a little bit up there.
So we need sidewalk, we're going to need flashing lights.
Can we zoom out a little on that plan? Yeah, I want to see the whole parcel. Yeah, maybe pan over. There you go.
Yeah, we don't have a copy of that one.
All right, yeah, the only other issue I have is, I'm looking at the area photograph and it's, looks like the lot is completely wooded. So there's going to be a lot of trees, I think you're going to have to take down, whether they're big or small, I don't know, but the, um, what I like is that you're minimizing the disturbance as much as possible to the wooded area. And, uh, I think that's good. But again, I think there should be some level of mitigation within the area that's developed in the parking area, around the, around the building of new trees. Large deciduous or evergreen trees that'll help buffer the, the building and, you know, mitigate the effect of the loss of the trees that are going to occur on the site. Any recommendations, Rob, on varieties?
Well, you know, there, there is a landscaping plan proposed already right on here. And, uh, they're meeting the town center design principle for street trees every 25 feet along the whole frontage.
That's good.
Um, the one, the one thing I will mention, I've just, I think I know this board enough to know, they're proposing eastern white pine, I think, was a street, that's not necessarily a street tree that the town normally wants to see as a street tree. So this is where Rob could step in on that a bit more. But, but yeah, that's part of, part of the, the design principles with the town center is, you know, lots of shrubbery and street trees and all that, so. They've already shown quite a bit of that on their plan, and the planning board needs to give them some guidance on that.
If the soils are heavy, which apparently they are. So that really should play into very strongly what, uh, landscape plants are, that are chosen.
Well, right now, there, there's 17, uh, eastern white pines proposed. There's six winter berries, and there's six silky dogwoods that are shown on here, so.
Nice. Oh, those are, I mean, I love those in the spring.
Yeah, so tho- those are more interior to the site, are the, uh, the dogwood and the winterberries.
Yeah.
What did we have Sparrow Nest do, anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Well, I think we should try to be consistent, no?
If you'd like, I can probably share the plan with Brian and
That way it's
You mean like for the street trees?
Yes.
The thing about street trees that we've learned from the elm, Dutch elm disease, is you do, you don't want to have a monoculture.
Right, right.
Otherwise, you end up, they get, next thing could be the eastern white pine. And then they're all gone, everything, every last one of them. So I don't mind if they diverge from that. Um, white pine isn't typically a street tree.
No.
I like white pine a lot, actually. Maybe we can put them on the corners of the building to soften those edges and, you know, to bring down the scale of the building. But maybe you want to reconsider the street trees on the street to be more traditional. Oaks and maples and
Exactly.
Things with nice fall color, large cannibes. You know, I, I hate giving advice, like free advice. You know, you should have a landscape architect involved. You know, who's making these decisions.
Well, no, we can, uh, we can, we can offer some, um, choices later on. But if the town has, specifically, I know some towns have this very, we want red maples, this and this, that's our theme. Uh, so, you know, but if, in the absence of that, we can
You're asking me to make a professional decision without knowing the characteristics of the soil, without understanding the microclimates with, you know, or even your, what maintenance responsibilities you're going to do.
No, no, perfectly traditional type of street trees. We'll, we'll come up with some varieties for you. We don't have to, um, you don't have to come up here with a pen and tell us what, you know, specifically.
But I think hi- his recommendation is maybe because this is in our town center, and it's exciting to us, you know, to see that happening. And, but it's an important, it's an important project here. That you may consider hiring a landscape architect to put a nice proposal together. That
But don't forget
That would do it justice for that, you know, given the location.
As I said, the important thing is, is that the soils apparently are very heavy.
Right.
If they weren't heavy, then we'd be looking at the original proposal. So you have to take that into consideration. Now, as an obser- just as a casual observation, all through, that section of the town center on Route 55, the soils are heavy. And if you'll notice, there are a lot of cedar trees that are there. Maybe cedar is something that you should consider because they are indigenous to, um, to the location.
I think you're supporting basically Rob's position. You know, this way, all of that is taken into consideration. And, uh, we won't have dead trees and things like that. There was a big outbreak of a particular larva, a hairy moth of some sort. That is expected to devastate a lot of trees in our area now. Any other comments? Any other thoughts?
I'll just mention that Sparrow's Nest used a combination along both Claude Valley Road and Town Center Boulevard of red oak, northern red oak, red maple, and Norway spruce.
Nice.
And it looks nice, it really does.
And then they, they sprinkled in service berry and pink dogwoods and eastern red buds throughout the site. So I'll, I'll send you a copy of this page, just so you can have it at least. Maybe try out a couple of varieties, just so there's a nice transition between one property out there. I'll see what anyone wants. What we can do on our side.
Yeah.
While being mindful of
Yeah, I think the important thing for us to, and by the way, I agree with the red cedars, they're, they're always a lock. They always seem, they're more amenable to most types of soils, is what I've noticed. But, um, the most, the best thing we can convey is you're on the right track, you're doing a street tree planting, where, you know, you need to buffer the building a bit and soften the building and scale it. And, and with those concepts in mind, you know, and then there's the neighboring property that has a plant list that you want to try to be a little bit consistent with. You know, that should give you direction you needed and provide a, a landscape plan strategy to us for, to review.
We'll, we'll go back and we'll see what we, what we can do.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board?
No.
Dan?
Yeah, so there's a few things we should, uh, consider doing here. First, for the record, uh, there was already a lead agency circulation on this when it was a subdivision, site plan and special use permit that had double the amount of units, much more impervious coverage, more impacts to stormwater, more impact to water supply, more impact to how much sewage was going to be generated. So, um, we felt that recirculating it, being that it's a newer project like this, wasn't necessary as it's a reduction in any environmental impact. We did receive some, uh, comments back from some agencies, health department, CAC, county planning obviously got back to us as well. So nobody objected to the planning board acting as lead agency and, um, and that actually, um, if I can just check my notes, I think planning board at the October 2023 meeting declared itself lead agency. So you are already the lead agency on it. Um, in terms of, of process, we, we thought it would be a little bit cleaner for the record to, uh, now that the subdivision component is no longer part of it, to actually rescind the sketch subdivision approval that was granted at the October 2023 meeting. That's one item.
Rescind it.
Yeah.
So that would require a vote.
I'll make a motion to rescind the October
2023.
2023.
Sketch subdivision.
Sketch subdivision.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And then we also thought it would be appropriate to rescind the sketch site plan that was, um, granted previously on that, since this is quite different than what was there before.
I'll make the motion to rescind the site plan that was, was that October as well?
Sketch site plan.
Sketch site plan, October 2023.
Second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you, you've already discussed a couple of the things. Town center has requirements on landscaping and buffering. You've already just kind of hit quite a bit of that. Um, one of the things I wanted to bring up was the driveway and the parking service, uh, surface. It's, uh, it's an item four as proposed right now.
So, so this is for the, uh, which areas?
All, in general, uh, once you get into the site, the driveway and the parking areas are item four.
Item four.
Yeah. Um, as proposed. So I thought it would be worthwhile for the planning board to talk about that.
Item four.
Particularly for the fact that, um, you know, that there are some benefits to it. I mean, even though in, in terms of stormwater, we still look at it as an impervious surface because it, it really ends up getting pretty compacted down and you don't get a whole lot of, uh, uh, infiltration, but you do get some, you know, uh, much more than asphalt, obviously. So, uh, there's that, but then there's also always the maintenance issues you have to deal with as well. And obviously, it's not a town problem necessarily, unless they really don't maintain it well, and then it becomes, you know, complaints to the town about the living conditions of the parking lot. I can't park my car without hitting a pothole or whatever else, so. Uh, I just thought I'd brought, I'd bring that up and, um, and then that way, if, if the board felt that the item four made sense, that we could also, since it's a site plan and special use permit, we can also ask for some conditions on making sure that there's maintenance and upkeep of the, of the item four driveway.
And that was the, uh, the driving reason why Tony Coviallo wanted an asphalt apron?
Yeah, so no matter what, you know, there's going to be an asphalt apron to the town road. It, it protects the town road from loads hitting the edge and then cracking off the edges. So he's going to have an apron no matter what. And, and
Can we request to have the parking lot asphalt?
Can you, uh
You, you could, you could.
So it's the parking lot?
Yeah.
If you could touch, yeah, right.
Just in the interest of questions about serviceability, long-term, you know, maintenance, having it turn into soup, you know, over time. I mean, I had item four before myself personally, and it's, it lasts for a certain period of time and then disintegrates.
The corner lot there, right at four corners there, they're, they're constantly regrading it and it's channeling and, and it washes into the culvert and all of that good stuff. I'm not a fan of it myself.
How would it affect the runoff plan if it was asphalt?
Uh, we would just have more of it sooner. There was still sheet flowing off the edge here, so it would just
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
You know, similar quantity, a little more is just going to get to the edge.
If you could finish that.
Happen sooner.
I mean
The important thing is going to be the base underneath.
That's always important.
A good structural support underneath.
All right?
Yes.
You have to have good
Yeah, you're going to
Subbase preparation and then subbase.
Yeah, it's going to have
Has to be very structural.
Subbase preparation if, if the soils are heavy. Of course, I meant the pri- I assume the soils on this lot are the same as at Sparrow's Nest?
I don't know if you can make that assumption.
Very similar, I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't know what Sparrow's Nest specifically, but
Is there, what's, they have asphalt there?
I believe they went with asphalt, yeah.
They have asphalt, and the library has asphalt. But Rob is a landscape architect and he, it does not have a problem.
I don't, I mean, I don't generally have a problem with gravel. It's my farm road is gravel road. It requires that type of maintenance, and I make that choice to do small annual maintenance compared to long-term major capital improvement. And in, when the asphalt deteriorates after 20 years, then they have to replace the whole thing, and that becomes a much bigger expense. If you regrade and reconstitute on an annual basis, you know, that, then it lasts forever. The only issue, I, I don't know how you're going to stripe it or maintain stripes on it. That's a different thing. But other than that, I, it's a private residence. It's not like a public commercial facility where we're inviting the public to come in. If that, people can choose to live on or in a house that has a gravel road. I would think they have a lot of nerve to come into the town and say, I moved into a house that has a gravel road and I'm not, now I'm upset with it.
I'm sure they will anyway, though. The other question, too, that I would raise up is, we have a lot, we have snow and snow plowing and then all that other, so I just, I personally don't care for the, the idea of that for a multi-family building. I think that that poses a long-term problem. I agree with everything you're saying. You make valid points. Obviously, this is your expertise. But from a perspective of in-and-out traffic, the striping, maintain, maintenance of the handicap spaces and so on, I, I don't advocate for item four.
Yeah, I mean, for the handicap spaces, I wouldn't be advocating for a hard scape surface regardless because, uh, you know, ADA regulations require a fairly stable surface even, um, and, and with certain slope requirements, so. I've seen situations where people just do concrete pad, basically, for the, the ADA accessible parking spaces in the loading aisles.
Right.
I've seen it where they just do asphalt and just butt the item four up to it. Sometimes it leaves the chipping of the asphalt if you don't, if you don't, but again, subgrade preparation is always the key. You know, the, the construction practices are always important in how it's actually going to function, so. And then also, like you mentioned, they do have, um, other product, prod, products, I'm sorry, that can, you know, uh, be stuck into the ground and kind of try to give ways for, um, to delineate parking spaces. Possibly you could put something on, some kind of markings on the, on the curb and the sidewalk that kind of make it clear to like, you know, move your car up into here, this is the parking space. Uh, there are also things you can try to put into the ground, so. You know, we would lean on the applicant to propose something. If the board wants to lean towards allowing them to have the item four, we do need to be able to make sure that they can, uh, delineate them well.
Are they proposing curb?
There's curb, there's, there's curb and sidewalk, yes.
That was going to be the next question, because with the curbs, and I would lean on Pete to ask, I mean, if you had to get a piece of fire equipment back there with those curbs, whether it's a car issue or getting to the back of that building.
Yeah, so, you know, the fire advisory board met on this when it was the other application, and based on the location, they said they would bring the truck in on that one. You know, we're definitely due to meet in June, um, so we can talk about this particular site. And whether or not they would come into the site, I, I suspect they might, you know, you, you just
Got a car fire in the back?
Depends on where the, the issues are, uh, what they're dealing with. I mean, if it's, if it's a structure fire, they may actually want to go off of Town Center Boulevard. It's roughly 40 feet to the pavement, by the way, from the actual structure. I just measured it, so. So, um, you know, there, there's, we'll discuss that with the FAB.
Okay.
And, you know, they, they may throw some, um, some comments in there about that as well. The, what's not negotiable for the board and the town is that regardless of the surfacing, they have to meet, you know, uh, a surface that can support the emergency vehicle weights and loads, and that's in our code, so, you know, whatever they end up doing, if it ends up being an item four over something else, it might end up being a bit beefier of a section to, to have that support for the emergency vehicles.
Eighty thousand pounds?
Eighty thousand. It's a lot.
Well, realistically, you might, I don't know what the equipment today weighs, but maybe 60, but if you go with 80,000, which is essentially deal But if you go with 80,000, which is essentially DOT, I think, DOT standard, then you'll have the support and you'll have it over a long period of time and regardless of weather.
Right. So, I thought it would be important just to at least give the applicant some guidance on, on that surfacing.
Well, I think, should we take a vote? That way, uh, the, the applicant knows what direction to go in?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it necessarily needs to be a vote. I mean, you can straw yourselves if you want. I mean, it's just, uh-
I'm quite honestly, uh, I'm ambivalent at this point. I'd like to hear a little more. I mean, is Jason, so you-
I'm asphalt.
You're asphalt.
I'm gravel, yeah.
You're gravel.
I mean, I'm okay with the gravel.
Now, you say gravel. Is gravel the same as, uh, as item four?
No, no. Item four is a mix of gravel and fines.
So, I, I think the word item four was used initially and, and to me, that's, you know, oil, sand, gravel, uh-
None of it.
No oil, though?
Yeah. What holds it together? What-
It's just the fact that it's well, it's a well-graded and so they, the, with compaction, it locks in very good.
The stones lock.
Uh, item four is commonly used as a subbase for roads because it does compact well and provides good support.
So, that's the subbase and then gravel would be on top of the item four?
No.
No, he might have gravel underneath, like a-
This is a subbase and then you'd normally pave over it.
So, it would look like-
There's a detail on the last sheet, I think, of the-
Gravel can, gravel, I think, can be any, Dan, gravel can be any size. You can, you can have fines in it, you can have medium-sized stones, uh, two-inch, four-inch. You can have eight-inch material in it. That's gravel. Your item four meets a different spec. I don't know exactly what the specs are, but they're definitely specs as far as the, uh, maximum aggregate size in an item four. And then, I think in item four, you end up with a lot of fines also, which acts as part of the binder, throw everything together.
Where the barber shop is there on Four Corners, you know, that building, they use Millings now. That's where I got my, uh, you know, the petroleum bit. Yeah, that's Millings, so.
That's different.
That's a different horse.
Right. But aesthetically, now Barton, he has, he has item four.
Uh, he's proposing Millings.
He's proposing Millings, actually, there.
Yeah.
Right. So, we have a mixed bag here in our community. But for the sake of consistency, you know, in that area, I mean, we have asphalt at Sparrow's Nest and we have asphalt at, at the library. Uh, the, it's not gonna look like Millings, I suppose, but, uh, I just think-
Well, most of it's in the back, too. You're not, you know, the library or you see the asphalt on the road. You see Sparrow's Nest along the road. Most of this is gonna be in the back of the building. You're not gonna see it.
Okay. That's a good point.
It's also consistent. When it's on the driveway and, yeah. The, I mean, my, part of my objection is deciding for the, the applicant that, you know, you have to do asphalt and, and that's a, a pretty big expense. So, in doing so, I would wanna, it, for me, it would have to be a safety issue or, you know, that I'm gonna require him or limit him to that surface treatment. If he wanted to do asphalt, that's fine, but, um, I just think, I, I wouldn't impose that on a private owning residence. It's a resident, it is a multi-unit. I get that. There's four people there. Um, so-
But you're also, we're all talking about consistency as well, whether it's in the back or the side. It's consistency.
Alright, so straw vote here is, uh, we have one gravel.
I'm fine with the gravel.
You're fine with the gravel. Two gravels. Asphalt, Peter?
I don't care as long as it's constructed well.
Yeah, that's the key.
So, you, you're either way and I'm either way.
I'd be more concerned about the subbase than anything.
I'm either way as well for those reasons. Uh, so it, it appears as though it is, uh, if gravel is what you're looking for, then gravel is-
Item four.
Item four, sorry, yeah. Item four. Okay?
Yeah, so, so in general, what I think you should do is just make sure that you have a real good section, uh, maybe, maybe run some of your counts on it. Make sure that you can support some heavy vehicle with it. Uh, come up with some ways that you can delineate those parking spaces that the, the planning board can be happy with. And, uh, you know, come up with a maintenance plan as well just to make sure that there's some teeth in it for, if, if the town does have to step in for some reason, that there's an ability to tell the owner they need to fix their parking lot.
Well, as Peter says, the most important thing is the base. You know, if that's delineated, so we've got some-
Pretty good. This is gonna look-
I had one other comment other than the, the road, if that's okay.
Yeah.
With regard to the limit of your disturbance in the tree edge that you're maintaining, I'd like you to, I wanna make sure that you show, uh, construction fencing, protect the street area, the, the trees that are remaining on-site to be protected with, um, tree protection fencing, something our inspector can ensure compliance with.
Okay, and then, um, one of the other things I thought the, the planning board should look at is the mechanical building. Could you just talk about the mechanical building that's shown there? And maybe provide some concept of, you know, is it gonna match the building architecturally? What the purposes of it is, um?
It's, it's just for the, um- For the water components, for any of the treatment or any storage.
Pump house, yeah.
Anything we have to provide for that, we'll be here with, um, pumps for the whole building. And the architectural, it's, I don't think we have one specifically settled, but once we have this direction, it's gonna match as we want it to match. You're gonna, you're gonna see it as soon as you pull in for the resident, so. It's not gonna be a-
Is there any other buildings on the property?
No.
No sheds?
No sheds. Uh, there is a, right now, we're showing like a bike stor-
Okay.
Permanent bike storage.
And long-term bike storage.
Long-term bike storage. Right now, we're not proposing any other storage of anything else.
Well, what is this in the, in the corner? It, it looks like on the, would be your, looking at it, the left bottom.
The trash bin.
That's for garbage.
Oh, okay. Fine.
Well, that, that, that would need to be-
And they, they put a detail on the plan for that, too.
What's, what do you wanna do with that?
We would, I would probably just do, um, either CMU and match the building or maybe we can split some stone on the bottom of that, too.
If I may, right? So, I, I like the idea, whatever stone that you're gonna use on the bottom and the board can weigh in on this whether they like the idea or not. But, uh, the, the stone, uh, all the way up to a tin roof for the pump house. I mean, uh, i- if it's too much, I would understand why maybe an architect would wanna break it up, but it's not as big as the, the other structure. And, uh, you know, I think we should weigh in definitely on the enclosure around the garbage as well.
Right.
Where is that gonna be in?
It's on the lower left.
Soon as you pull in.
As soon as you pull in, in view of the, of the street?
It's, it's like-
You will be able to see that, um, to ease the truck when it can just pull straight and then turn around and ease towards your details.
What's, what's in the lower left-hand corner, all the way down?
There's the detail on the screen.
The septic disposal.
No, I know, but I saw like, it looked like a little building. It's not. On my plan.
That's not unfinished block, is it?
It's, it's-
It's okay.
CMU finished, it's a custom map, proposed building.
Little square here, I think it's just where the grading line is.
On my turn, it's like a fence. It's not there. It's not on my thing that I can do.
Two, two different companies.
Cambridge, likely like a drive.
Cambridge is one, Cambridge is one.
Yeah, okay. Alright, that's it. You're good. It's just that's a bigger thing than what I have.
I like, they have these, you know-
Has to be sprinkled, right?
I don't think-
So, I spoke to the building inspector just to kinda confirm some of that. So, what she said was it's, uh, I think it was a R2 classification, but because of the orientation of it as being two units by two units, uh, side by side and then over on top, the fact it's not a three-story building, you can have two-hour fire-rated walls in between and fire-rated doors that might negate the, the need for a sprinkler.
It does have more of a mosaic, like a regular stone.
If you go three floors, then you need sprinklers.
Three floors is not negotiable, yeah. Sprinkler all the way.
It's gonna match. Well, it's gonna match, right?
Yeah, I, I, so, we're having a little sidebar conversation here.
Well, we can get to that when you get to the-
Did we miss anything?
Uh, Peter just asked about sprinkling, that's all.
I think you're right. We should reserve that for another discussion.
It comes in with materials.
Yeah, so, we're, we're not sure exactly what materials that you're proposing for the block, whether it be the block on the building at the bottom, the pump house, or the, or the garbage enclosure. Uh, we were talking about Cambridge products, you know, the, the common ones you see. We're not really a fan of those, I don't think, from what I'm gathering amongst us. I don't know how the other board members feel. Uh, Rob spoke about segmental, uh, mosaic, uh, mosaic pattern block.
I mean, I'm always a fan of more genuine materials, actual stone.
Right.
But i- if it had to be, uh, like one of these block kind of things, there's lots of different options. And there's some that more emulate a, a stone look without, and I'm not talking about the foam liner, foam liner stuff that ends up looking like crap.
Yeah.
If we're talking, they're still segmental blocks, but you can do it in a mosaic pattern.
So, if the natural stone is, you know, cost prohibitive, I agree with Rob in, you know, the, uh, what did you call the, the natural stone looking?
Yeah, have them bring it in and we'll, we'll work on it then.
Yeah, right. Just propose to paint samples and things.
I'll, I'll have to go back to applicant and see what they can, uh-
Okay.
Where everything fits in their budget. Again, with, with the consolidation of, if you want, just one building, we are losing-
Right.
Half our units, if you will, to, you know, so there's, I think, I do have a limit on what he's gonna be able to make sense financially. And it's shifted with the scale and scope of this project a little bit. So, I just, I don't wanna-
Burden.
Agree to too much here without consulting him first, just to make sure.
You don't wanna spend his money.
It's always discussion anyway.
I'll spend your money, but I can't spend his.
Well, I think, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves.
I think we need to let you bring in and have a discussion.
Yeah, 'cause the, the ARB is gonna review the building. They're gonna review the signage. They're gonna review the, uh, refuse enclosure as part of it. Uh, they're gonna also review the lighting fixtures. So, it's all, it should all be a package so that they can see the whole picture. So, you know, definitely need to advance the elevations to provide materials and colors and, and, uh, samples are always helpful.
All of the, I'd like to point out that all of this discussion, that what happened is gonna be applicable to the next time on the agenda also.
Right, yes, that's a good point, yeah. And, 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 uh, all of this, all of, all of this is very important to have completed and in a, uh, in, in a format that would allow the public for the hearing, uh, to see. All right, is there anything else we have to do?
Yeah, I thought that if the, if the planning board is in favor of this layout, you could also consider now granting a new sketch site plan approval for this.
I would like to make a motion to grant sketch site approval.
I don't have a problem with it.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
No nays, no abstentions.
And, uh, and they've, they've met most of the requirements of 155, 59D and 59E, which are sketch and, and preliminary site plan approval. So, they, they've provided a number of items that would be necessary and allow them to go towards public hearing. I think, I think it would be important for the public to be able to see materials and colors. I don't wanna speak for them and say that they can get that done by the next submittal, but, um, that was the other, the other thing that you could consider is setting a public hearing on the site plan and special use permit.
Are you ready? Is there a way to cause the applicant to commit to completing the application?
Well, the, the only other way you could do it is, you know, you have it in front of you. You know it's there and then you say, "Okay, now we can go." So, it's up-
I'm sorry, I didn't follow. So, what, if-
He's, they didn't think he'd be ready necessarily.
I wanna make sure that you're ready. If we schedule a public hearing, I'd be ready and, yeah.
Because we have to make the decision tonight, um-
No, you don't have to.
You don't have to, because it sounds like you have a lot to discuss and I'd prefer you err on the side of caution if you have any doubt. Let me, uh, what's the net, uh, I don't have the submission schedule.
The deadline for the June meeting, you wanna know, or do you wanna know the?
Both.
June and July?
It's usually two weeks, right?
It's 17 days prior, so the, uh, deadline for the June meeting is June 3rd.
I mean, the issue that we've run into many, many times is we have to discuss, which is, does, did he complete, did he put enough information on the drawings that allows us to make the decision? So, the one thing I know we talked about was indicating where the tree removals are.
You've got a lot to do.
I think we're not, I don't think we're gonna be ready for June.
You've got a lot to do.
Great. I think it's July.
Yeah, maybe we'll do it for the next one, yeah.
I don't wanna show up and kinda, you know, I'm sorry. It would make sense if you could come back with some more of this information and then-
I will try to-
Board could come back for the June meeting, but not necessarily for a public hearing.
Right.
That's great.
The materials that, that, that Mrs. Grito requested as well, which would be nice, and, uh, and Rob's as well regarding the trees.
That seems like a reasonable thing to do.
So, the public hearing won't?
No.
Maybe, you know, set it up and it goes on for six months or delay one, maybe it goes on for two.
We can't have it anymore. We want, we want the applicant to be as prepared for the hearing as possible so that the public can look at your presentation and weigh in properly. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
It's not going anywhere.
Not yet, I'm not. Not yet, I'm the next table.
Oh, you're next?
Oh, so you could just photocopy those notes? That's great. That works.
Good evening, Brian Watts, Stace Toccoz Engineering for Dutch's Contract Incorp. Not Brian Stacozzi, he's with family again. He has not made the meeting on time for this agenda item either. Well, here I am. So, we've, um, I know that the board had trouble following the, a couple of the prior submissions. We were told that we had a little color to break up some of the lines to try to help so everyone could visualize a little better, um, what things are and where. It's a little busy.
You wanna look at this, Pete?
And, uh, we did submit the SWIP. We had, um, the preliminary draft SWIP to get the ball rolling on that with some hard numbers and some actual drainage boundaries, some actual flow.
This is the DOT?
We've, we've got the comments back and, some comments back from the DOT, just some minor additional items, they're why. The, they've got the traffic impact study. Uh, I'm not aware of any particular deal breaking comments on that. Uh, so we are gonna have that left a little bit. Uh, the front building did a little off slightly um, because it's just the way the bits and everything, we don't have to give as much as we've missed. So, the building's a little bit longer, or, excuse me, a little bit closer to the road um, to meet this outback. Um, so I have to watch here a little more, otherwise the plan is relatively basically the same. I believe we can finalize that for the adjacent parcel, parcel access. I'm here with, we're providing off of the town road alongside the pond area. Appears my clodder is out of ink. My water is not blue at all.
Yeah.
And the brown, the brown is tennis court or pickleball?
Sports equipment. Uh, pickleball is very popular and I think those are actually the correct sizes for picking. Probably words in the general playground area, maybe, I don't know, swing set or, or what have you. Again, buyer retention in between the parking areas, the upper sections, drain, come down, a few catch races to this before it discharges through this, um, the- through catch races to this before it discharges through this pond, there's a hydrodynamic separator here, which will, anything that goes into that pond, it'll be treated. The yellow, these are all these storm planters against the building, all the roof leaders will discharge of that for treatment.
Brian, you'll just excuse me one minute. I'll give, Mr. Crane, would you like this, so you don't have to stand there?
There you go.
Sure.
There you go.
You're welcome, of course, thank you.
Let me take this away.
No, it's, I actually have another one. So I've been, I've been asked by legal that there's potentially an access or easement need for the two homes in the rear right-hand side relative to the front?
Well, if I can clarify.
Thank you.
I did talk to, I had like a phone conference with the applicant's attorney and Paul Ackerman, who's actually a title examiner, abstracter, and there are two, that private road in the back that is, that connects to the two rear lots, the private road actually meanders into the subject site, to the point where we don't know how much of an encroachment it is. So the applicant is going to have to give a declaration of easement at the end of the day to those two landowners so that there's no question as to access. I had asked Mr. Ackerman to provide an abstracter's opinion regarding that private road and who owned that, like, no man's land in between the applicant's property and the private land, six lot owners that are adjacent, and it's part of your packet, you can read it at your own leisure, but to fast forward to the answer, he basically said he doesn't know, he can't tell from the deeds as to, you know, who owns it, but the 50-foot, there is a 50-foot right-of-way that comprises the private road. And again, that private road does kind of like sneak into, into the applicant's property in the rear, so there's going to have to be a declaration of easement so that those private homeowners don't lose their, their rights with respect to that 50-foot right-of-way.
Did I understand that that 50-foot right-of-way was not delineated? It just said that there is a 50-foot right-of-way?
Yes.
So that's a big problem, right?
Yeah, it appears that by use it's delineated, but the use, the present use of that road, there's no description of it.
But don't you think that should be established?
We cannot, because.
Because it's on their land, you can't.
Because, exactly, it's outside the site.
Except for that one little area, correct?
Except for that one area, so that's why we're going to have this applicant declare an easement in favor of those rear owners, so there's no question.
Can't, can't he make an agreement with those neighbors to straighten out their road so it's such that it's off their parcel, and then have them sign or relinquish their rights on his property?
It's a good question, it's a fair point, but it requires the cooperation of everyone.
Yeah, and if you have one who doesn't cooperate.
Exactly.
One that it doesn't affect.
So they, they have the leverage because, right, well, the road is there, but it's already on his property.
No.
Well, that private road, that private road isn't needed as part of this site plan, so the...
But it is their road to get to 55 is on his property.
No, it's on, it's on their property.
No, but the road goes right through his parcel.
Oh.
It's on Dan's road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if, fail.
But, but it's there by use, but it's not delineated as being there by description.
That's correct.
So don't we need to have it described?
Not necessarily.
We're providing a new town road, well, I shouldn't say we, they're providing a new town road, so the town road provides access for everybody through, and then there's a stub that goes and meets up with the existing private road so that the existing private road can continue to.
Okay, continues, and we won't be maintaining that.
Correct.
And it's not a big amount.
Isn't there a color version?
No, it's not a big amount.
Oh, so, so that stub that's on the applicant's property, that goes as part of, that's part of, is that part of the right-of-way, or that, does that become part of the town road, or that becomes an easement?
No, it's outside the, the site line.
That's theirs.
This, this section is within our property line.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The color ends at the property line, lines up.
Is the town?
This section almost follows the existing alignment for.
All right, but that's not answering my question.
Who's going to maintain that little piece?
Yeah, exactly.
How is the town going to do that?
I don't think this board can really concern themselves because it's not the applicant. It's outs, it's again, it's in that no man's land, that, that area that's always been maintained and used.
The little elbow?
All right, but I want to know, who, what are they dedicating to the town? Can you describe that? What is getting dedicated to the town?
As shown right now, we have a, it does come up straight up, somewhere. And then it colors on the property.
So is it just a standard right-of-way?
Right now, we're showing a standard right-of-way.
So it doesn't include the stub off to the?
I don't think we've changed that with that last submission.
Does it include the stub?
Until we, we had a feel for the actual legals, we haven't.
The reason why I question is, is we use a certain size rig plow to do that, and we wouldn't have a turnaround in order to get in there and plow that little, that little section.
I mean, right now, this is, and the existing easement, I mean, that. Perhaps something could be amended where these are. The driveway, if you will.
Because then you'd have to send a, a little truck to plow that, right?
That's the existing Bishoff Lane, right?
They're going to give, they're going to give this to the town. Question.
That's what I'm questioning.
How do you turn a plow around?
Eventually, they're going to have to dissolve this existing right-of-way easement that runs about right through here.
They're going to have to come.
Yeah, but if they, if they have to maintain that little section.
Well, I don't think they're going to want that. I think we should refer them to Tony.
This is part of the existing right-of-way?
Again, worst case scenario, like you said.
The path hasn't changed, the road hasn't changed one bit for the private owners, but the only thing that changed is you widened it.
If you overlaid the two, the existing Bishoff Lane is further to the east than the proposed town road.
Right.
Correct.
It angles off.
So there would have to be a declaration of easement from the applicant to the Bishoff Lane owners to travel over that road.
That's a town road to the.
Well, it's not a town road, it's a, it's a driveway. It's really a private road, it's an extension of the private road.
No, I think Fades returning, referring to the road that would be constructed.
Right.
Which would be a town road.
Right.
Yeah, so they.
It's being built to town spec though.
What's, what's going to happen is, is when you give us a plat, yeah, we're going to see where the town proposed right-of-way is, and then we're going to see where, where the private road comes off of it, and if there's a little elbow that needs an easement, there's going to need to be an easement there, and if there's encroachment on the backside, there's going to need to be a little easement there too. I think it's pretty simple, to be honest with you.
Exactly, you characterize that exactly, correct. I don't think the town's going to want to maintain that elbow, I would think.
Yeah, definitely not. I don't, I don't think we necessarily.
It's like a driveway.
Thinking the town was going to have to.
You can't, you can't.
Anticipating the town actually maintaining, we were thinking of it more of a.
There's no going to be.
Driveway connection, if you will.
There's going to be no offer of session, there was no.
No, I mean. I think whatever the existing private road agreement here would have to be dissolved, correct?
Do they have to agree to that?
No, it would have to be restated.
Rest, well, every, I'm lacking the terminology, I apologize, I just.
It would have to be restated and reaffirmed.
I, I think we want to kind of correct that issue with this process. And make it clean as possible.
It, it would be nice if everybody was on the same page and the owners, and maybe if they come in during the public hearing, it can be addressed if they're, they're amenable to it, but we can't make them do so because in order to put together a road maintenance agreement, they would have to agree as to the cost and everything, and that's why these are impossible. These old roads are just not going to happen.
What if they don't agree, even though it's not?
Why don't we talk to them first?
Well, they should.
Well, it's outside, it's outs, this area is outside the bounds of your, of your present site plan.
He would have to talk to them.
No, but what about the existing Bishoff Lane that's within their line? If you're saying.
It's actually being improved.
I think Joe, Joe could put a couple of Roman lion statues right on that portion of his property, and what are they going to do then?
Yeah, I really don't think it's as complicated as, you know, there's going to be a new town road that provides access up to where they take a driveway off of it. It's, it's no different than your driveway off of an existing town road.
And actually, it's better for them because they don't have to maintain.
They, they're actually losing about 200 feet of maintenance.
Of what they have to plow and maintain as, as we speak.
Right, it would make it easier for them, wouldn't it? It would be a nice.
It's going to be owned and maintained by the applicant with a right-of-way to the private landowners in the rear.
Right, right.
And they're actually gaining for that very reason.
They're gaining a lot.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Craig, I got one for you.
Okay, I'm ready, Pete.
Okay, three stories, three stories building. What can be done? I think that in a situation like this, maybe commercial, but I would like to see a discussion on how an applicant can be, we need somebody to assist in purchasing fire equipment. Bottom line.
I'm confused, what do you mean? What do you mean? Is that as part of the application?
As part of the application. Okay, various applicants, not in, not in this town, but in other towns on large projects, will, I don't know whether they volunteer or what, but for purchase or contribute towards the purchase of fire apparatus to maintain the structures that are being proposed.
Do you mean like an ax or a fire truck?
What?
An ax or a fire truck?
We're talking a fire truck.
Oh.
You mean as in that ransom?
I was hoping for an ax, Joe.
That's outside of like ransom. That sounds like ransom.
Maybe a hose, you know?
It's definitely.
Well, they pay, they pay fire tax.
It's, first of all, it's outside the purview of this, and second of all, it could be construed as an impact fee.
Right.
So it's, but stay away from that.
I don't think they're under any obligation to, by law, by any of our codes to, to do that. We do have a recreation in Lua, that's in our law, that's something we require, but this isn't, we don't have anything in our code requiring the applicant to provide.
Why could not, why could not the town consider something like that?
That would be a town board thing, Pete.
I understand that, but you know.
I think you know a guy.
The thinking has to come from someone.
Yeah. All right, can we see the landscape plan, please? So, I think a lot of what we talked about before, do you have a landscape or elevations or any?
We have, it was submitted with, not this submission, the prior one, this submission was, we had limited it just to try to colorize some of the, I know we showed the, and one of the big items is that the OT is on board with, with this, there's a couple more items they want just added as part of the boilerplate requirements, but we are showing the left lane, and that we had to get some kind of semblance of a SWIP in it to get that started because so much of this is dependent upon getting that stormwater to, to work number wise and within the, within the permit limitations.
I appreciate that, that's fine, you don't have to have it here, but I did have comments at the last meeting regarding landscape plans. So I'll refer you to those comments. And, and, you know, before we even consider the public hearing, we'd like, we'd like, we'd like you to bring us right to the point where we were in our discussion previously.
Where was that?
Well, the elevations, the colors, landscape plan, those kinds of things, so that the public's properly.
This is what we've shown so far, I mean, we can add, I think there's a color version of this, I don't think it created.
It's pretty sharp looking, you know, we just have to take it a little further. I'd like the board to just weigh in on it, you know, is that a tin roof on top, or is that asphalt?
Right now, we're showing just asphalt shingles.
Asphalt, right. I'm fine with that.
I know you like tin roofs, though.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, not necessarily the whole roof.
Again, the dormers or something, maybe we can.
I, I didn't mean, I mean, I didn't mean to imply that that is specifically what, you know, he has to do here. I, I thought it was a nice touch on town center growth, but I, I like the, the stonework coming up, I don't know what that material is, we'd like to see that. I do like the widow peaks at the top and other, other little pieces, but colors, materials, a landscape plan that, to include that park area that you have planned, so that, you know, the, the public hearing is constructive. This, yeah, this is, the location, this is right in the center of our town center, so my comments were oriented to, we, we're looking, we want to see a nice, beautiful development, nicely.
Esthetic value.
Yeah, it's, it's very exposed to our town residents, and we just, we want to see it has a nice entrance planting and buffering on the buildings, and I used the words last time, robust planting plan. Lots of, you know, you know, it's a large building, pretty building, definitely beautiful, I think we'd complement the building with plantings on the corners and stuff to, you know, soften the edges, and then there's, I guess, street tree plantings, and, and then, yeah, like the idea of the flowering plant, small flowering trees and stuff around the development. And then what's the plantings around the stormwater basin? What are we doing there?
Well, we are going to have those stormwater planters across the front of these.
Oh, right.
So the main base will have, will largely be those planters. Again, I can, I mean, I can plant, plant stuff just outside of those to kind of give it a little, little something more besides low plants, but there's always room for improvements.
I think we need to try to, something to scale down the building, it's a large building. When it goes up, it'll be pretty impressive from Route 55, and that's what, that's what the landscaping can do, is to scale that down and to make it more human scale. And, but I'm saying the larger stormwater basin, you have a fence going around that?
The, this?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we have a fence along the, the whole top.
Right, so we, we had the same situation in Dollar General just down the road, and at the time, I was asking for the same thing, more of a robust planting, and we got all these tiny ilexes, and it just looks like these little lollipops at the base of a chain link fence, did absolutely nothing to buffer the fence. And so it's right on our, it's right in our town center, and I just, I think, and that's my personal opinion, we should have. And, uh, I just, I think, and that's my personal opinion, we should have, we should buffer the chain link fence unless you're doing something more decorative.
I can propose a more decorative fence or maybe I can do like a, some kind of creeping ivory that will grow along it so it's. No, okay.
It's okay, do it then.
Some down like it, some don't hide it.
Someone's a landscape professional who understands these.
I told you bamboo, Robert, but you don't like it.
Something native would be better, but, um, something to hide the fence, something to soften it.
Yeah, thi- this is, uh, like very similar to the conversation we had in December on this. Um, I, I thought I'd offer a suggestion so that we can all get on the same page here 'cause I think the last two times that, uh, the project's been before us was more just to give us updates on DOT and everything else. So as we were trying to look at what the materials were that were submitted for the SWIP, that's when we realized that there was a full plan set that was actually submitted in March as well. And so I started looking at that and, um, couldn't really necessarily know exactly what you had, um, addressed from our last review letter versus that. So I think a comprehensive package of resubmital with everything, uh, that would include responses to the July 2023 review letter, some of which may be done and some of which may have changed a little bit based on some of your revisions since then. Uh, 'cause September of last year was one of the bigger changes where you dropped down to 54 units at the time. And that was, uh, based more on, um, more on the water from the Duchess County Water Waste Water Authority. And now you're down to 48, which is based in part because the stormwater was an issue. So, um, what I thought would be helpful is if you address that July 2023 letter. Um, and then look to sections 155, 59, D and E, and basically use as a checklist. That's how I review. I'll just go through every single one of those items. Did they provide this? No, yes, and where, whatever. And then I can forward you some preliminary comments on the SWIP that you submitted. Uh, you'll need to update the environmental assessment form based on now, what's here now. And then submit all of that as a full package, um, and with all the supporting documents. Um, the traffic impact study is probably a little bit off. It's, um, less of an impact than what they were saying now by a little bit. I think that was, I think the traffic impact state, um, study was September of 2023, and that was, so that was the 54 units. It talked about the level of service down at the intersections that the planning board wanted, so, um, just a whole concise package of everything submitted and then we can probably move on procedurally from there.
If I can add one thing, the, um, the enlargement of the, um, private road on the applicant's property should be defined by a meets and bounds description, so right up to that Y. And then the area which meanders in the rear into the applicant's property should also be defined by a meets and bounds description. So the easements can be identified easier.
We just wanna go, uh, the edge of the road or just wanna like a generous swath just where the road could?
I can't even tell, like, you know, on your map, how much of that private road goes in there?
Yeah, a ton, but it's that.
It's not a lot, but it still has to be identified and the, uh, because you, you don't, you wanna make sure also that it doesn't get enlarged.
Yeah.
By, you know, use against your client, cause he's the, uh.
Well, we are filling, there's a lot of fill here, so he's not gonna have much. We're going up to our, up to that driveway, so he's gonna have to put it in four wheel drive if he's gonna.
Yeah, well, he, he.
People get creative, I know.
So it's gotta be identified and, um, you know, the easement has to be given to them.
Yeah, one of the things I asked for in that July letter was a plat. That's gonna help clear things up, I think, for the board if they can understand where proposed property lines are versus improvements and all that.
Yeah.
And, and technically to go to the public hearing stage, you need the plat anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, things, things like that. So just, uh, I think take Rob's comments about the robust landscaping. He mentioned that same thing in December for sure. Um, I'll have some comments on the, on the SWIP that I can email to you that, just based very loosely on what we read. You know, 'cause there still needs to be a coordination between the SWIP and the plans and the details and, you know, so some of the, some of the details aren't showing up just yet, so we will, we'll need all that. Um. Yeah, most, most of the numbers were just, you know. Yeah, yeah. Well, the water, can, can it work in there? Uh, I believe my hydrocath modeling has actual rims inverse in it. Probably, yeah, yeah. Um, they're, Hydrocath doesn't like zero zeros, you know, so, um, there are actual, those are reflected on the plans, if not called out, um, so. Yeah, that's it. There's, I don't think there's details for the wiers or the outlet control structures, things like that. As long as we think that, you know, that every volumetrically and everything, we can agree on that. Um, 'cause if we think we have to tweak it, it tweaks enough in the wrong way. Well, one of my comments was about aquatic benches and safety benches, or if you're gonna go four on one, 'cause we talked about the fences in December, we talked about the benches in December, so that's not reflected just yet, so it'd be good to have that included. If you go four on one, technically, you don't need the benches and, you know, as, as you know, from the Stormwater Design Manual, if you go four on one or flatter, you wouldn't need the safety and aquatic benches and technically, you really wouldn't need the fence either, but. I think they're putting, put the fence there anyway. They may want to. It's, it's a liability issue for your client. That's fine. We understand that. I think I have Staco's homework.
Required, right? I would, one suggestion I would make as a tree sugge- the red cedars were, there's, that site is filled with red cedars. If you plant it out there, it's gonna survive. Just like Peter was saying before.
And if you look up Widow's Peak, you'll get, you'll see a haircut.
What?
If you look up Widow's Peak, you'll see a haircut. It's actually a widow's wall. Exactly, yeah.
I like it as an architectural.
I like, I think it's, I think it works, yeah.
Well, I think we've, uh, covered a lot of ground tonight.
Yes, thank you.
So I, I don't know if there's anything further we can move forward here or not. It doesn't sound like it. Uh, I think we've got a full plate. Um, we'll work on those items to try to get the planning board, uh, in there. I don't know if it's gonna be by July or not, the time we get samples colorized and a couple other things. It's a lot of work. And I'll be waiting to brief comments. I'm not expecting, you know. Yeah, I, I can. Yeah, no, no, you're not, or, yeah. I'd like to think I gave you more than just the afternoon, like. No, no, we, we looked at the SWIP without knowing that the plans were there. So then, and then we just, we were trying to compare it all to it today, so. Right, that's why I figured I'd just email them directly to you and if you give us a comprehensive response to the July plus those and plus what you've heard from the board over the last, you know, we had September, December, March, and now April, uh, now May. Do we get, I don't know if we met in April on this. I don't think so, but March, May for sure, so.
I mean, the good thing is you made a lot of progress. I think you're, in the skeleton of the design is, you're pretty much there, you know, with the layout of everything. It's just the fine tuning at this point.
So what you're saying is basically, we really wanna see a complete package.
Right.
Before it goes to the public hearing, so that we avoid prolonged
Correct.
public hearings.
Yeah.
Thanks. And, uh, our code also. It's not in our interest either. Our code for site plan also asks the applicant to send us correspondence with the outside agency. So whatever your correspondent with the DOT and whatever else should be provided for the planning board files as well.
I had to ask him if there were gonna be any actions, but, uh, clearly not at this point. Thank you, though, Brian.
Yeah.
I hope we've had fun together tonight.
We did, thank you.
We're gonna do it again in July.
Yep.
Uh, maybe June, maybe both. Um, so I guess that wraps up for me.
Thank you.
Wait, thank you. Thanks, Brian. Have a good night.
Yeah, I apologize to everybody who didn't like work, but same in fact, I'm like.
Thank you. Okay, uh, extension for Grape Hollow East subdivision.
Hi. Evening, all. John Kalin, DC Engineering. Been a few months since we saw you.
Yep.
Um, coming back, uh, to let you know where we are with the, uh, stormwater stuff. Got some comments from, uh, Dan's right hand man, Eric, and, uh, we incorporated those into Lot Two. I did not wanna submit Lot Three separately, so we're still in the process of finishing up Lot Three. Uh, so I can give them to you guys probably in the next week, uh, and hopefully be done with our end of the stormwater. So, um, I tried to get it in before then, but we had some digital hiccups with, uh, HydroCAD, so I kinda lost my files and I rebuilt the whole thing. Fortunately, I kept a copy for myself, Dan, and I didn't give you all my originals, but it was a little painful for the past couple of weeks, so.
I have a, whatever you've given electronically, if, if you need, let me know. I have, we have it, so.
I resurrected whatever we had to do, but.
Okay.
It's amazing how hard it is to have everything you think you have.
Yeah.
A pencil and paper, you can't go wrong with those.
Sorry that happened.
We lose our server or backups in the pharmacy for Dan.
That's not good.
Yeah, it's bad, so. Yeah, it's a short and sweet thing. I mean, I just wanted to give you guys an update in the face again, let me know that, you know, we are working on it. And, uh, I highly intend to get to the, uh, the June deadline for the next meeting with everything complete.
Board, uh, on board? Yeah, you have a motion for the extension, please?
I'd like to offer a, how many?
You said till.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna submit next month. I mean, I know Dan's probably gonna have a process of just reviewing and getting back to me, but, you know.
I assume truly, but do you want?
The legal stuff that goes along with it as well, so, you know, they, they requested 90 days, which would bring them through August 13th, 2024.
I'll offer a motion to extend to August, uh, 2024, extension.
All seconded? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. So I'll, I'll see you guys in June.
Perfect.
If you put the, uh, death float.
Thanks.
All right. Goodnight.
Bye-bye.
My wife always let those widow walks.
Are we adjourned? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Yeah?
And Jason seconded?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.